Good morning, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started. My name is Christopher Lai, the President/CEO of the Council of Love's Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to welcome you all here today to the campaign forum. I'd also like to thank the candidates, Dustin Harris, Steve Gorman, and Cole Button, for joining us here this morning and participating in this candidate forum to help inform all of you, but also for their willingness to step up and serve our community. Before we get started, just a couple of people I'd like to recognize. We do have a sponsor this morning that's helping to make all of this possible. Advance Southwest Iowa Corporation is our presenting sponsor here this morning. And Advance Southwest Iowa is the Ottawa County's economic and health organization. They're a great partner to the city and the county and organizations like the Chamber. And I'd like to thank them for helping to make this happen this morning. I also want to thank the Council of Love's Community School District, and particularly the H.I.T. union that is here this morning on their Saturday morning, helping us get the room ready and make sure that we can do this for you all this morning. Finally, I'd like to thank the Non-Pharrell. We at the Chamber are a partner with the Non-Pharrell in a few different things related to the election, including a voter guide that is available on our website, counciloflove.com, and agreed to help facilitate these forums. We hosted two candidate forums prior to the primary election, and we have this forum this morning, as well as a mayoral candidate forum next Saturday morning, 9:00, same location. And the Non-Pharrell has graciously volunteered to help facilitate all of these forums. So I want to thank them for their efforts and clear partnership in these election events. So we're going to go ahead and get started, and I want to introduce our moderator today, Phil Taylor. Phil is the former president of Omaha Hall World Herald, former general manager of the Non-Pharrell, and currently serves as Vice President of American DCS, a great local small business here in Clough.
Thank you, Chris. And let me just add to that intro. Until today, the only guy who still wore a tie on regular basis. So it's good to see four of us in the same room. I think probably the first time that's happened since COVID, where we've had four of us with ties on. So again, as Chris said, thanks to everybody for being here this morning. Thanks most of all for the candidates for your commitment to improving Council of Love's. We're going to get started and jump right in. You don't want to hear it from me. We want to get to as many questions as we possibly can for the candidates. But before we do, just a few quick notes. First, you'll see an empty seat here tonight, right? Jessica Vanderpoel, who is one of the remaining four council candidates, had a commitment that was scheduled prior to these candidate forums being scheduled. So she unfortunately isn't able to be here with us this morning, but again, had something scheduled ahead of these things. As you have with each of these forums, let's please keep it respectful. No interruptions and outbursts. I wouldn't anticipate that being an issue, but we appreciate your respect to the candidates. Each candidate will have 90 seconds for an opening statement. We'll then ask a list of questions that have been prepared by the daily Non-Pharrell to address issues that we feel are important to the voters. If we have some time at the end of those questions, we may open up two audience questions. So if you have something that we don't cover during the list of questions, please be prepared, and we may call on you if we have time left after these initial questions. Each of the candidates will have three minutes to answer each of those questions. Time will be kept by Jessica here in the front row. She's got a yellow sign that will indicate there's 30 seconds remaining. And then the candidates have been instructed, when she raises the red sign, that they are asked to finish up their question or their answer. And then after each of the questions is asked, we'll have time for closing statements, which again, each candidate will have 90 seconds. So Dustin has agreed to go first. Each of the candidates will have an opportunity to answer a question or two first, but Dustin is going to go first with a noting statement. Dustin, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. Thanks for everyone for showing up today. My name is Dustin Harris. I was a police officer for about 24 years, seven, eight years as a detective. The reason that I'm running is that I had my career cut short due to a medical issue, and I've seen some things that I think I can still help with. I want to get back into the public arena and to help the city. My big things, if you look at my website, dustinharrisforthepeople.com, or Facebook, is that trying to get things cleaned up, put the homeless stuff in town, some criminal stuff in town, going after some of these derelict properties that I think that we need to deal with to help with crime and homelessness. You know, I just kind of drive around with family and seeing some things that look like they're a little bit worse than they were a few years ago, and I had some ideas and had some ideas on this stuff. But unfortunately, you know, when you're an officer, you aren't able to get those ideas out to the public. But that's why I'm running, and I hope they give you a thank you.
Good morning, everybody. First of all, thank you. Good morning, everybody. First of all, thank you to Phil and the Chamber and the Non-Pharrell for providing this honor. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to all of you. My name is Cole Button. I'm a third-generation resident in Council of Love's. My mother graduated from this school, and my grandmother lived here for over 50 years. So my background, I graduated from Iowa State with my degree in finance. I worked as a financial analyst for several years studying small businesses, and then I eventually decided to make a career change and switch over to public safety like my father. And now I work as a correctional officer for the sheriff's office, working at the jail. And working at the jail, seeing a lot of challenges that our community faces with homelessness, mental health issues, substance abuse problems. And I'm running because I want to help the people who legitimately want help and want to improve their situation, but we have to prioritize public safety, and I'm running for that. And I'm also running because we have to make our city more business-friendly as well. I want to help attract more businesses to help us not only grow our community, but also support our existing businesses as well. And I'm running because I think we need a new perspective from the next generation. A lot of people have said that they really like seeing more young people getting involved in these local politics, and I think our community is aging out, and we need to get more young people to want to come here and set up where it's here. And I hope to trigger a vote on the number four. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Steve Gorman. Once again, I'd like to thank Phil and Chris, the Chamber, and the Non-Pharrell for providing an opportunity for us to get our perspectives out to the public, and hopefully we can cover some questions today that have been answered in our state. I'm 64 years old. I was born and raised here in Council of Love's. I graduated from St. Howard's High School, where I met my wife, Chris, who was a school teacher in this community in this school district for 33 years. I worked two jobs most of my adult life. Mine as an electrician, 28 years as an electrician, working mostly in commercial and industrial installations, and also 30 years in fire protection, living in this community. I was seeking reelection. I served four years on city council, which I felt like was good, positive years, a good learning time for me, and I'd like to learn when you get on council. I ran the first time on density, bringing more people into our community, and I'm looking forward to continue that work if you reelect me on my moment of void. Thank you.
Right. We will jump into the prepared questions provided by the Non-Pharrell. The candidates have not seen these questions ahead of this morning. Cole will ask you to go first with this one. Cole, how have your personal or professional experiences shaped your vision for the city and prepared you to serve on the city council?
Right. So like I said, I work as a correctional officer at the jail, and I see a lot of the challenges every day, a lot of those issues that are growing with the homeless population, the substance abuse, mental health issues. A lot of those problems end up with me at the jail, and I know Dustin and Steve both testified to that as well. And so I work a lot of that daily, which takes up a lot of my time. I got to know a lot of people that are in those groups, and I've seen that this community, the homeless community in particular, it has good people and it has bad people, like every other community. And talking to them and getting to know a lot of them and seeing the challenges that that presents for our city, I want to support and help those who legitimately want to get better. There are those who want to kick addictions, those that have it. There are those who want to improve their situation, they want to get off the streets, they want to improve their lives. You know, people get laid off, life happens, you know, it's not all their fault. But I've also seen those, I'm having conversations with those, that there are some that don't want to improve their situation, they're comfortable with where they're at, and those are the ones that we have to hold them accountable. I want to get support for those who want it and accountability for those who don't. So working at this capacity has got to be a really good perspective on these issues and seeing how they've kind of changed over time and how the problem's going to worsen. And one of the big issues is I'm seeing is that a lot of the people that I book in at the jail, particularly with homeless or drugs, mental health, they're not even from this community. A lot of them, the most recent act is they have from Sioux City or Omaha, and they said that, well, I told the guy to bus, and I came over here, and you know, don't know what I'm doing here, and then, you know, that's the problem. Now we're having to deal with not only taking care of our own, but we're being asked, the tax payers, the Council of Love's are being asked to take care of Sioux City's homeless and Omaha's homeless, and that's not our tax payer responsibility. And we need to work on stopping that inflow and figuring out who is bringing them in and putting stop to that, because if we don't, it's just going to get exponentially worse. So I want to make sure that we're getting support for those who need it, but holding those accountable and keeping our public spaces safe. We have to keep our parks clean, we have to keep our parks and public spaces family-friendly, keep them safe for you, keep them safe for your children. We have to make Council of Love's a place where you want to live, where you want to raise your kids.
Cole, anything specific from a city council standpoint that you could think of that we could do to slow that inflow that you mentioned?
Right. So the first thing is we have to find out who the groups or places are that are busing them in, and we have to do everything legally that we can, whether that's take them to court or whatever it takes to stop that inflow. And then we have to work with our police, with our HOP team, the homeless outreach program. Our police department is doing tremendous work, but they are stretched too thin, or they keep getting asked to do more and more with very limited resources. We have, at the city council, we have to make sure that they have the support and resources that they need to increase enforcement in the areas that need it the most, so that we can keep those public spaces safe. And the first thing is we have to track down who is bringing these people in, who is shipping them in, and we have to get that stopped. If we don't stop that inflow and we get five, 10 more dropped off a week, we're not going to be able to keep up, and it's just going to get exponentially worse.
I would like to say, as I said earlier, I was born and raised in this community, and I was educated as a young person and graduated from St. Howard's, where they concentrated our education on community service. I was born a public servant, I believe. This was my family, that's mostly done, firefighters, police, police work, postal service. So I was just from a very young age aware of the importance of giving back to our community, and I have tried to make that a lifelong goal. I worked 28 years, as I said earlier, as an electrician, and mainly mostly commercial and industrial jobs, which gives me an insight of construction, able to read pot plans, you know, blueprints and those things. I understand construction from the bare ground through to the finished product. That helps when I'm on city council. Like I said, it's really important to me to be open and not set in a mindset. I like to listen to the community and study every issue that comes in front of the city council. I think it's very important that we don't come in with a set mind. We have to research out the issues and the developments and the things that are important for our community's homelessness, and we need to have an open mind and make those decisions after we educate ourselves to the most, as we possibly can in this given circumstance. That's what I hope for the city council.
Like I said, I was a police officer for almost 24 years, a military detective. I've seen a lot of things that a lot of the community that lives in these areas knows about, but a lot of the rest of the city doesn't. And I think that we need to get awareness more out there to some of the problems that we have with the homeless and with crime and with the courts and drug use. You know, just in the last few days, I was talking to a supporter who had a friend, and he told me how his friend is now deceased from drugs, was actually dealing in front of one of our shelters for quite a long time, and out of his vehicle right in front of the shelter. And I've had another subject who are supporters that works at one of the other shelters that was telling me about how people from one unit was dealing drugs to a lot of people in the other units, in particular females. And, you know, that's something that we need to work on through the city, and I'm going to pass that information on to the police department. You know, I was a detective, but I've had a lot of people sending me a lot of information, like Cole was talking about with the busing. You know, I broke that story, and a lot of people in the community who are great sources of information that just kind of gave up on it and told me, this has been going on for a couple of years now. We were able to get photographs and information passed on to the police department, and they're working on that, and the mayor's working on that. And, you know, they're making some introduces, and I don't want to step on their investigation, but, you know, it's something that we have to deal with. Yes, we need to help people out, but importing people here is not helping out the people that we currently have. That's just going to tie up resources. That's going to make our neighborhoods less safe, because some of those people are, you know, drug addicted and, you know, are off-grid for a reason. When I was a police officer, we had a lot of calls in the areas near the shelters, all the way up to the river, of people, you know, trying to get children into the woods, sitting there watching kids. And we would go and we'd talk to these people, we'd run them, and some of them would be registered sex offenders, some of them would not come back in all 50 states, and we had no way to verify who they were or what they were doing in our community. And I think that that's just kind of my expertise, and I'd like to really help out with that. And I think that one of the best ways to get commerce and new people moving into our city and to help the residents of our city is to deal with this issue, because no one wants people rooting around in the yard at 3:00 in the morning. No one wants people beating on their doors, tearing up their trash, you know, passing out in, you know, properties up and down Broadway. And I think I have the best plan for that. Thank you.
Dustin, similar to my follow-up with Cole, anything specific that you can think of from a city council standpoint to address? You identified a lot of the issues and a lot of the symptoms that we see from homelessness, but from a city council standpoint, anything specific? Is it funding? Is it, you know, anything you can share or any specific that the city council could do?
I think that we, sorry. I think that we need to make the city less attractive to people coming here. I think that we need to, again, deal with the busing situation. The police department's working on that. I'll continue to be a conduit, whether I can elect them or not, for people that see things, they can forward that information to me, or I can get them in touch with the correct people in the police department. I think that that's the number one thing that we have to do, is stop the influx right now. We also need to look at, you know, Omaha's doing that, that criminal camping code. We have a lot of codes that already cover that already as far as trespassing on public lands, public intoxication, you know, different things like that that we've already have that we've been used. But I believe that we also need to talk to the shelters, you know, a wet shelter, you know, is brought up, that is needed, because if we don't have a wet shelter, a lot of people are going to leave. Well, a lot of people there are not getting help. They've continued to be on drugs, they've continued to be on alcohol. And I think that we need to talk to shelters and have a more realistic outlook on that. And, you know, if they're not accepting services, if they're not trying to better themselves, maybe we need to have the shelters be a little bit more involved, some of these other groups that are there that go in to help them out, try to push them along in doing some drug treatment, to doing some alcoholism treatment, you know. And, you know, we also need to know who these people are. I mean, it's my understanding is still the same as it was when I was a police officer, where you can walk in with no ID, give anything you want, write it down on a sheet of paper, and you can spend the night, and some of those people have been there for a while. You know, some of them sign up for services, and then later they verify who they are. But, you know, I think that there needs to be an ID requirement. You know, if they don't have an ID, they can get set up with one. And we can also, you know, try to verify who these people are. Take a photo of them, that way we know who is in our community, and this includes the camps as well. I know the police have already done some of that with their camps. You know, I just learned two more this week that I've talked to the police department about. In the East End, in nice areas, friends of mine and these people just are constantly going up there and causing problems, and I think that's something that we need to work together to solve.
Okay, Steve, you'll be the first to answer this question, and it is, what challenges and constraints do you foresee in maintaining city services at current levels, and how would you address them? Please be as specific as possible. Again, what challenges and constraints do you foresee in maintaining city services at current levels, and how would you address them?
Right now, our main cost to our budget in the city of Council of Love's is our public safety. And it gets, every year, it gets tighter and tighter. A lot of the things that we have control over, we don't have control over, it comes from the state of Iowa with their property act and their taxation that they set legislatively. We have control over our levy. We, actually, last year, I believe, we lowered our levy by just a little bit, but like I say, our assessments all go up because of the fact that it comes from the county and from the state area. It's very tight. It's going to get worse, I believe, as we go forward. There's talk now that the legislature is redoing the property tax that they've been talking about for several years, and they're looking at rolling back taxation on, you know, that's going to affect Council of Love's directly. Right now, like I say, about 60% of our budget goes towards public safety. We have a gap on our roads right now in our services in our community. We have the inability to draw in enough money to take care of our roads. We are selective of what we resurface so that we can keep our theater roads in good shape and, at the same time, our neighborhoods and other roads that aren't active. This comes from the fact that we don't have the population base we need in town to take care of our roads. This is why I speak a lot about density. We have to be creative in what we do from city council and work with our community development in order to do proactive things that are going to draw younger people, younger professionals into our community and get more population. For example, I'm 64 years old. When I was born in 1961, we had 55,000 people approximately within this town. Today, 64 years later, 2025, we have 62,000 approximately in our community. We gained about 120, 150 people a year in my lifetime in the city of Council of Love's as Omaha went from 460,000 metro area to almost 1 million. We are not doing something right. We have to look at how we can bring more people into this community, help spread the cost out amongst ourselves, sort of become more important for our fire protection, the flame protection.
Thanks, Steve. And as you mentioned, there are certainly some decisions made at the state level that impact our revenue that we have. There's some ideas on how we can grow that revenue base. Specific to expenses, Steve, anything that you could identify where we might be able to reduce some expenses until we're able to grow that revenue base? I think we all agree that's going to be a longer-term solution. Can we maintain the existing services with inflation, with, as you mentioned, public safety being the largest part of the budget? Anything specific that you could identify in a budget where we might be able to cut expenses?
Right now, our budgets are very tight. We really don't have a lot of meat on the bones in order to cut services, I mean, to where we can find savings. It's going to be very difficult going forward if we do get rollbacks in city finances and our taxation and our levy to where we're going to be able to maintain services. Unfortunately, when we look at making up budgets or making up debts, it's a budget. A lot of the places we look first is that parks and recreation, and we start packing out of those areas and protect our main services. The number one job of our community is, like I said, is protection of our citizens. And so we have to have, maintain a police and fire in that. It's going to be difficult choices going forward if we do have to start checking and making it if that's working. Because the last thing I want to do is price people out of their homes. I don't want our seniors to be choosing between do compete. I've seen that before. We can do, we can do some things, but like I say, it's going to be an item-by-item thing because we have very little meat on the bones to do that. Thank you.
A lot of people have been sending emails, and I'm sure the other candidates as well, to pledge to a 5% tax decrease. But if you look at the budget, we're at or over where we need to be spending wise, day income ratio. And I think that the best way to handle that is, there are some areas that we can cut, police and fire, one area that I think that would be good, you know, the SRO program. We could hire, you know, former soldiers with clean mental health that have experience in dealing with, you know, combat situations and stuff to keep our schools safe. That'd be quite a bit cheaper than paying a top-down officer to be here all day. We could save some money there. There are other areas I think that we could cut as well, but like Steve said, you don't really want to cut, you know, police and fire. We can't cut the numbers. We're already, you know, limited in some of our, our responses, I think. You know, we've needed a new fire station in South Bend for years. If people knew, you know, how long it might take for an ambulance to get there from North Broadway or from all the way out, you know, down Station Four, it, I think that they would be pushing for a new fire station. But with the incoming growth that we have, which we do need, we need more of it, you know, we need to know, have an idea in the future of what size of a fire station we need to build there. I'd like to see a police substation built in there as well. We already have land that I'm told that we own for that. And, you know, once we get our income up, we got our tax base up, you know, we need to do that, we need a lot more housing, we need a lot more mid to high income to effectively and quickly boost that, that tax income up. But we also still need to have some, you know, low to mid-level housing in town, because there's a lot of people I've talked to, their parents can't afford, live places, you know, we need to get some housing for those people that worked all their lives and now they're retired and, you know, they're having a hard time finding somewhere to rent. As far as spending with roads and sewage and stuff like that, I think that we need to, you know, once we get our tax base up and we get some more money coming in, that we need to look at instead of doing repairs as we've done for many years now. And I've talked to the guys that show up and when waterline bursts or when a, you know, a hundred and something year old sewage line is still lined with bricks over by minister and the road caves in, you know, there's whole sections I think that we need to do like a block at a time, which is a lot of money, I know. But right now, and for years, decades, we only fix what needs to be fixed, and we just piece together, and then two weeks, two months, a year down the road, we come back and there's another spot, you know, fifty feet down that we have to fix, and I, I think that that's not cost effective.
Cole, you're up next. And again, just to repeat the question, what challenges and constraints do you foresee in maintaining city services at current levels? And how would you address them? And again, if, if, if you don't believe we can, anything specific on the expense side that we might be able to reduce?
Right, so obviously, like it's been stated before, the population has stayed the same for decades. While the population has stayed the same, and the cost of everything keeps going up, with that, it's going to put more strain on the existing residents. We have to get our tax base broadened, we have to get more people to come to council plus, to want to come here and live here. We're going to need more dynamic housing, we need more affordable housing, or senior-friendly housing, more high-density housing. Also, one angle on that, I also served on the, served my second term on the county compensation, compensation board. That's pretty much everybody has seen, that a lot of property is around council plus that have been abandoned, they're boarded up. There are a lot of you see that dragging around the roads. And one thing I've seen working on the compensation, compensation board is how much those abandoned and properties hold back growth for our city. They just sit there empty, and they don't house anybody, and they don't generate any property tax revenue. And that's, you know, money that we can't use to fund services like police and fire and parks and the library. And I want to work with our partners and our nonprofits and developers on assessing the feasibility of taking those abandoned properties and either getting them up to code or getting them bulldozed and ready for developments. We can get people moved into those properties, get them rebuilt, get them occupied, and get them generating additional revenue. That will help not only with generating revenue, but it'll also help with the population growth, it'll help with the housing shortage that we're facing right now. I believe the housing market vacancy rates less than two percent, based about one point seven, one point eight. That is a big problem, and that's part of why we're seeing housing prices out of control. That's why we're seeing increased homelessness, that's why we're seeing a lack of population growth for the places, they don't have enough places for people to live. The city's working on developing about eighteen hundred new properties that are scheduled to be developed by twenty thirty. We have to be going in that right direction. We got to keep looking at dynamic housing while we're, while working to preserve our green spaces and entertainment options. But for the budget issues, I think that is probably the biggest thing, is not a ton of them, like they said, there's not a ton of waste that can be cut. Their, our departments are running pretty slow. I don't want to see the police get less funding. We, we spent a lot of time talking about all of the challenges that they're facing with increased homelessness and the increased crime. We can't ask them to do more and give them less resources to do it with. So I'd rather focus on growing the tax base, broadening the tax base, getting more people who want to live here long-term, get their families here, and we're going to need more entertainment, more housing. I think that's the more strategic way to go about it.
Cole, you and Stephen Dustin have all indicated it's, it's more revenue, there's not a lot of expense to cut. You mentioned on, on the revenue side, potentially a, a shorter term solution might be addressing some of those properties to get them back on the, the tax rules so that we're collecting some revenue. Do we know, are there five in those homes? Are there ten? Is there a thousand? Is that, is that a realistic solution? How, how many, do we know how many there are that we could get back realistically on the tax rules to help with short-term revenue?
Right, again, we have to partner with our developers to see which ones are, you know, most immediate, which ones are most feasible. We also have the city surplus program, I guess you mentioned that earlier. We have vacant lots in City Twelve that the city government owns and they sell at discount for people to develop on. And the problem is a lot of those are much smaller, so we need to tweak the code to make it easier for people to build smaller homes on those. So between those and the number of abandoned properties, condemned properties, we have to look with our developers and our nonprofits to assess what quantity is between all of those that if where it is feasible to do that. But ultimately, we have to get, you have to be focusing on how can we get more entertainment options, bring people to stay here instead of going to Omaha, especially young people like me, you know, we, I have a couple years under the steam, so we gotta, we gotta work on getting more people to come to council plus and want to stay here. A lot, we're losing a lot of them to Omaha. Like I said, population of Omaha has exponentially outpaced the council plus population because they have a lot more entertainment options, a lot more things to do, they have a lot more, you know, high-density places. We got to look at dynamic housing, we got to look at all of those options. We want to get people here to broaden that tax base.
Steve, did you want to address the, the age difference that?
No, I'm young at heart, well, maybe I am, but anyway, I would like to address the fact that, that we do have a repurposing of homes in our community. We work with Iowa laws, and we buy properties, and we do return them back, and we tear them down, and we put, and we return those properties back into the tax base. That's been going on. We, many of the boarded up homes that we have in our community are owned privately, so it's very hard to go in and just take each property. If they get behind on taxes and things like that, then we can go in and let those take away. We do have extra properties in our community, and many of those properties, as Cole was saying, are, are not of building capabilities because of the size and, 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 you know, to the current code of what we need to establish homes. We did go in four years ago, and we tweaked our, our codes to allow for conditional use building, where we can take some of these properties and without objection of other neighbors and things, they can conditionally build a home that would suit that property. We had problems with homes that would catch on fire. That, once it did catch on fire, with the size of that property, it was possible that where they could not rebuild even their own home onto that property. And so that's one, part of the reason why we went in and redid the codes to allow for conditional use, so these people can rebuild their homes to where they can afford to live. Housing is very important in this community. We got two percent, just above two percent availability, which increases everybody's costs throughout the community for, for housing. And so mixed use and building where our infrastructure already is, is going to be the very best way that we can afford to build and, and bring density into our community. The west end of our community, our infrastructure is underground. We can go in and build cheaper in those areas with mixed-use developments, like, like Cole was saying, dynamic heights of, of housing, having storefronts and businesses below, living above, and rebuild our infrastructure, we're going at a much cheaper pace than what we, we can do at least right for the UBS. So those are some of the things we need to pay.
We pivoted a little bit with this, with this forum to make it hopefully more meaningful to you and anybody who might watch this when we posted later today. So we're allowing for some follow-up questions, as you've seen. We'll allow, at least set the standard at two minutes for the follow-up answers. I should have talked about that before, but, but I appreciate the flexibility that candidates have had, but just, just planning two minutes for those follow-up, so we can get through as many questions as possible. And again, we'll, we'll throw it out to the, throw it out to the audience for, for questions toward the conclusion of this forum. Dustin, you're first up again here. The question is related to housing, much like homelessness, this isn't a local issue, it is, it is a national and really an international issue. But specific to our discussion today, do you feel the city's approach to increasing affordable housing is the right path? Or is there another way?
I think that we do need to increase housing, obviously. Affordable housing is one area that we need to get into. One area that we're also currently doing is building a lot of, you know, mid to upper level income apartments to increase that population density in an area, to allow us to get a lot of taxes from a small area without spending a lot of money on services in that area. You know, I, I kind of brought up the, the derelict housing issues, and I think that one, that's one area, like Cole mentioned, that we need to look at. There's a lot of properties here in town that are not being properly maintained and haven't been for decades. And I think that we need to go in there with code enforcement and, you know, get those cleaned up, make them safer for people. And if they don't want to do that, the owners, some of them no longer live in the community anymore, then we need to look at getting them condemned and getting them going through the process like we did decades ago. And, you know, like Cole mentioned, there's quite a few that are empty and aren't buying torn down. You know, if we can, if we can get those properties up to, up to code, you know, with seven-one-two initiative wants to help out or, or other partners, then I think that we can get in there and make those livable. There's quite a few very large houses with dozens of, of apartments in them that I think would be perfect to start looking at, that have had a lot of problems, a lot of fires. I've been in some of them and seen their wiring is taken out, accessible to children. We've wrote that up. I went back in there, you know, six months later, and it was not fixed yet. We need to look at this stuff. I think that that would give us, like Cole mentioned, we can get them being producers for taxes, we could get them, people that are, you know, want to work, that are cleaning sober, that are, that are living on the streets or close to living on the streets, somewhere to stay. We can look at, you know, getting veterans someplace to stay, families that lost a home, someplace also to stay. You know, we can clean up those areas and clean up those neighborhoods, because a lot of those places are abashed in the crime. You know, if you watch the news and all, you'll see a little over a month ago now, one of the houses that I've been talking about with people, it was somewhere where that little girl from Omaha was being, you know, tracked, picked out of, and it also had some pretty horrific crimes there with other children. There's a child that was killed in that same building, you know, back in, I believe, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And I think if we clean up those areas, we can make them producers again, taxes, we can also get them, people that need housing, that, that are cooperative and that are going to appreciate it, somewhere to stay. And I think that, you know, that's one of the things that I think that would solve some of our issues right now.
Dustin, just, just specific to the city's approach. Is it a funding? Is it a, is it, is it, the, the, maybe the rules or regulations that we have in place? Is it, get the right partners at the table? Anything specific to the city's current approach that you either agree with or might change on the affordable housing topic?
One area that I think that we could change, I was talking a few days ago to a friend, that they were trying to get their mother that was not able to afford housing, a place to stay. They wanted to build like a mini home on their property. They were told that they couldn't do that, that they would just have to basically add a, a, you know, bedroom or something in the home for her. You know, I'd like to see it easy for maybe adding on to properties to, to allow, you know, family members and stuff to be able to stay there, having as many homes or something. I think there needs to be a relaxation in the codes there. Now, a lot of small businesses have been complaining about issues that, that they had as far as trying to get their businesses going up and running. So I think we need to look at that as well.
Cole, again, the question, do you feel the city's approach to increasing affordable housing is the right path? Or is there another way, or maybe feasible?
Yeah, so we already obviously kind of touched on this earlier. You know, I talked about, to have abandoned properties, I serve on the compensation, compensation board, so trying to get those, be a little more aggressive with trying to get those properties up and back on the tax payroll and getting those occupied. And like, like Dustin said, I also mentioned earlier about changing city codes to make it easier for smaller developments on not only city surplus lots, but on existing property lots as well. So we'd make it easier for people to build smaller homes, guest homes for, you know, people like their in-laws or, you know, whoever. We got to make sure that we're making the code work for the residents, making it easier for them to get the home and the property that they want for them and for their parents and for their children. So I think those are some issues, there are some areas that the city can do better to help at. I don't, I, you know, like I said, the city's got about eighteen hundred properties under construction with, at this pay, nation date about twenty thirty. I think that's moving in the right direction. There are more properties that we can look at. We got to keep exploring all of those options, we can get more dynamic housing, we can get more properties, not only for younger people, but also for retirees. Make sure that they have affordable place to live when they want to transition out there to the same home. So those are some issues that I see.
Cole, back to the, the code issue, the city code, if we might be able to modify that, we'll help some of, some of the affordable housing issues. Anything, anything specific with an existing code? Is it, is it, is it a new one? Anything you might be able to share, again, relative to, to the code issue that you brought up?
Right, so there, there are restrictions on minimum size requirements, and that is part of the challenge, because while the city has the city surplus program that is great, a lot, most of the empty lots that are available in the program, they've been sitting empty and available for a long time because they're so small. So it's very difficult to develop on there, on that square footage with, within the parameters of the existing city code, the minimum size requirements that you have to meet. So if we can make it easier to build smaller homes and make it easier to build guest homes on existing properties, I think that's the area that we can really improve on, and that will help increase the housing inventory, that'll help us increase our population growth, that'll help us increase the property tax revenue without raising the levy rates. I have to help with that with everybody.
Steve, do you feel the city's approach to increasing affordable housing is the right approach? Or is there another way?
I, I think the city does a, you know, a pretty good job of working with other gov, other government agencies, State of Utah, State of Iowa, to get, get funding down to make housing more affordable. There's always work we can do, and there's always areas that we can better in. One of the things that we, when I was, got on the council, we were looking at our, and we chose on the council to bring our funds and use them for housing rather than to give to, to overtime and, and to the hospitals or other things. We, we decided to put it into housing, and we purchased a number of acres and started development, you know, on this eastern sidewalk development. And that is going to be an area for workforce, housing, apartment living, low-income housing, affordable housing. Now, when you talk about affordable housing... Now, when you talk about affordable housing, when we build, we build it today's market. And it's very difficult to build and build a home that's going to be affordable. Where it becomes affordable is through programs like the National City and Council Plus with down payment assistance, rent assistance. From State Iowa, we get, we get help with rent assistance, you know, with affordability in that way. But also, one of the things that we need to work with is with Omaha because Omaha, our type funding from the federal government comes through Omaha. And we get less than a million dollars out of that funding that comes from, uh, into the city and Council Plus for housing. And so, we need to get a collaborative approach and work better with Omaha in order to address this housing problem that we have throughout our whole metro area. Because housing in Omaha is spreading further and further to the west. And we're not building enough, enough rate over there to bring in population. And so, we need to readdress what kind of funds we need through, since Omaha has control of that funding, to obtain more to address the affordability of our homes in our community. And so, I look forward to doing a larger collaboration with Omaha as far as finding funding for homelessness, for housing and for making housing more affordable.
For those of us who have young adults who are about to enter the home buying market for the first time, it is a whole lot different than when most of us entered that market. Steve, you brought up rental assistance, down payment assistance. Current programs adequate, maybe you could expand on those, what you might do with those to help everybody, but particularly those young adults who might be in the market for the first time for a home?
Well, I think in Council Plus, I don't vote me to small numbers, but I know that we're about 10% higher in wrinkled population versus other communities across the state of Omaha. In other words, we're at like 36% population of wrinkled versus 28% or 27% of communities. I could be more single-family homeowner programs so that we can help our younger kids that come into the market with high debt, come and come out of college, not as high a rate that we need in order to afford a sustainable living in our community. And help with down payment assistance to get them into our homes, our building equity in our population and our community. We can get them into our community at first through wrinkled. But we want to be able to have that ability moving from rented properties into homeownership so that we can build equity and have a strong, healthy community going forward. It's costly, but it's also costly not to have that equity into our community. What happens when you have a high rate of population that's wrinkled? They become mobile and they move from place to place. And being a quarter state, they move from Omaha to Council Plus, Council Plus, Omaha. And it's hard to get that stability in our community that we need going forward. And so, I would work with the state and I would work with our community development, which does have availability for down payment assistance, you know. And when I first bought a house, and I'll tell you this, I wouldn't have been able to get into a homeowner at the young age without help from my dad. And I also paid 12.5% interest on the first home that I bought. And so, we can't afford that. We have to make it affordable for our kids going forward, especially when they're paying the debt and they're paying the college thing.
All right, now to everybody's favorite topic, Dodge Riverside Park. We're going to just, we've had plenty of discussion. You guys are on the record on it. So, let's keep answers to this question to two minutes. But it is a big issue in the city of Council Plus, so we didn't want to miss that topic. So, Cole, you will go first here. And the question is, do you support the redevelopment of Dodge Park? How firm is your position, whatever that position is?
No, I do not. While I see the, so bad at that. Uh, no, I do not. And while I see the intent and I understand the intention of it, I think it's clear from the community that they want us to preserve, protect Dodge Park. They like having that quality of life. They like having the entertainment option. And they have, and high school kids go there to practice or sports. And I think it's nice that we have that feature in Council Plus. We haven't reached the point that we have nowhere else to develop. We, there are still a lot of areas east and so that we can still look at and explore that we're not at this point where if we don't develop here, there's no other option. We can't develop anywhere else. So, no, I'm firmly on the no side of that issue.
Steve?
Dodge Park has become a hit and is based in all of us. We were talking earlier about affordability of our community. And I think when we're looking at being able to afford our streets and our public safety, we have to put everything on the table to look at. I voted in favor of continuing the study of Dodge Park. I'm not firm on developing Dodge Park. People have positioned me, but I don't have enough information. What we had before was a conceptual drawing. There was a lot of misinformation that had been poked around, out in the public. But we need to continue this conversation and get the facts on the table. I think that we had a conceptual drawing. I learned some out of it, but got shut down quite early in the study session of this. Till I know more of what is available for us on that property and whether it would be worth losing such as I versus affordability of our community. I have the information here, solid here.
Dustin?
I wish that we had somewhere that we could build that large project. We do need something like that. Right now, I'm not for it. I think that just since it is a floodplain area, the amount of dirt that we would have to bring in there would be tremendous. It would probably end up having to kill a lot of the trees and stuff up there in the street space that people, you know, like to go and visit. I think that adding that much weight to that area, even if you had to get down, I don't think that it'd be a real stable building platform. It could cause, you know, issues up there. It's been mentioned and it's been previously talked about at other city council meetings. When the engineers came in and talked about the adding that amount of weight to that area would push on the wet sandy soil, the channels of sand running underneath the river. I saw these areas myself. They call them sand boils. You know, 2011, when the flood hit, they were pushing these sand tunnels around. And we were having sewers, basements, complete roadways that were pushing in. And you could literally look at the roadways and they would go up and down just with the weight of the water pushing in the river all the way. And I think the furthest one east, I believe it was about 13th Street that we had. So, I'm not sure if that's going to be a stable building platform, do you think about it? You know, a lot of people that I've talked to, I haven't talked to one person, one citizen that's in favor of it. So, right now, I don't think that, one, it's going to even be able to be built on in that manner. Two, there's no public support for it. And I think that, you know, if people really, if we see some public support, let's hold it to a vote and let the people decide.
Just a follow-up to each of you and then to clarify that the city's current approach, excuse me, last vote, was to continue to study the viability of Dodge Park for potential housing and entertainment. So, just, we're going to try this. One word answer, Cole, we'll start with you and Steve and Dustin. Do you support, would you support a vote to continue just to study the potential for the development of Dodge Park?
That requires putting in the surplus, so no.
Steve?
Yes.
Dustin?
No.
Okay, thanks, guys. Steve, we will address this question to you first. How would you approach workforce attraction to ensure Council Plus continues to thrive? Does the city do a good job working with prospective businesses and entrepreneurs? And again, as specific as you can be in terms of if you do support it, what are those things the city does a good job of? And maybe if there are opportunities for improvement, anything specific where the city could do a better job on workforce attraction? Steve?
I believe housing is one of the critical aspect of workforce. Sometimes we have, I've heard that businesses have been looking at Council Plus as far as coming to land here and grading out, so that they're not housing aid to support their people that would come in to work with the company. And so, housing would be one of the ways that we, and we thought about that way. I think we need to do a better job of mainstreaming some of our community development and our staff to work to make it a quicker process possibly or a more inclusive process to young entrepreneurs and help them to find, you know, some funding and things that are going to make them successful. Density, once again, is going to go back to that. We need population in our community. We need young people in people shops and our stores. I would like to see our downtown area more hustling and bustling at night as far as store rents and people in town and restaurants, those kinds of things. We don't have enough of. We seem to shutter up at night and then we have our bars open around 10 o'clock. And we need more diversity in our community as far as bringing more people into our community. I believe that we need a downtown hotel. I don't think we're a successful community that is out in our country. It doesn't have a downtown hotel. We have two hospitals that are, many people come from outside of the county to come to the hospital. And if we had something downtown close to the hospitals, I think they would use it. Also, we have Iowa Western, which has young people in their facility out there and people come in, travel and business. And so, we can support a downtown hotel, attracting people into our community. And it brings, you know, it helps our entrepreneurs to be able to assist.
Dustin?
Yeah, I think that that's one area that we need to look at. I was actually going to mention until I learned that it was already going to be having a property built there, is having somebody renovate or tear down and rebuild, you know, 500 West Broadway. That was something I was going to bring up, but I learned that there's going to be a coffee business that's going to be there now. I think that, one, kind of going back to our earlier stuff, you know, the homelessness and the crime, I think that's one area that some people just don't want to develop here. There are a lot of businesses along Broadway right now that are having constant issues. Managers that I've talked to, things that are being dealt with, you know, our police force is stretched thin. They're basically just putting out fires on West Broadway on the trail right now and just getting them moved along. I think we need to push my aforementioned issues that you see online, to get that areas cleaned up and that will allow people to actually, you know, see Council Plus in a different light from outside of the community. And maybe they'd be more apt to bring their businesses here. There are a lot of areas, you know, that we have built, that Mid-America, some of the Riverside stuff that's still unoccupied. I think that we need to do what we can to get those areas filled up and look at some of the empty lots that we have in town and to developing those as well.
Cole, again, this is, and I know Dustin, you and Steve, Cole, it's a housing issue. We build the houses and jobs will follow. But Cole, specific to workforce attraction, the question is, how would you approach workforce attraction to ensure Council Plus continues to thrive? And does the city do a good job working with prospective businesses and entrepreneurs?
Right, so I originally came from a business background. I worked for years as a financial analyst studying small businesses and throughout this campaign, talking to local business owners. And there were, one thing that I've heard over and over again is that Council Plus is difficult to do business with, that when they, there's a lot of, I think, some unnecessary restrictions or burdens, some regulations that we could reassess and see, you know, if it's worth having in place. Or is there ways that we can make Council Plus more attractive for prospective business owners? One thing I'd like to do is, at the city council, establish a task force of business owners, developers, entrepreneurs, existing and prospective business owners, and sit down together and look at what are the problems that you're seeing with the city? What is preventing you or your friends from wanting to come to Council Plus? What's something we can do better? What's something we can make smoother? What's something we can make easier to understand or to work with the city, staying compliant with our regulations, staying compliant with the city codes? Whether that's, you know, addressing, like, some of the codes that are hard to, or burdensome, or we need to invest in more business liaison to help prospective businesses understand and help them navigate the city code and help them working with the right people. I think all of those are areas that we can look at, but we have to change the culture. We have to make Council Plus more pro-business, more business-friendly. We have to make them easier to do business with. Some of the people that I've talked to, they've said that, you know, my friend was looking at, coming to Council Plus, I told him, oh, we should look at this place first. And he was happy that he made that decision instead because they were a lot easier to work with and get the business established that we wanted. And we have to stay competitive in that marketplace if we want to bring those jobs in. But as Dustin and, you know, as I said, we also have to make sure that we're cleaning up the streets, we're cleaning up the areas. People aren't going to want to bring a business over if they go down Broadway and they see homeless people camping out in front of businesses. We have to make it attractive and desirable for entrepreneurs to want to come here instead of anywhere else. There's a lot of places that they can build. Why should they choose here? We have to be able to take care of those issues.
So, I'm going to give each of you a follow-up and we'll give each 60 seconds. But I want to ask each of you, Steve will start with you and Dustin and then you, Cole. But something specific, could you each name something specific related to workforce attraction that the city of Council Plus is doing well now? And then something specific, if it's a code, if we're tough to do business with, what is it specifically that we're tough to do business, that we're tough to do business with? So, Steve, something that the city is doing currently now related to workforce attraction that you really like and you think is producing results? Maybe something that either they're doing with or something new that you would introduce that we're not doing right now? Steve?
I think we are sitting in a situation with Iowa Western Community College. It's out of right in our community. It's one of the best community colleges we have in the country. And they do a very good job of developing workforce for our community. We can do a better job of maybe putting in some ordinances that would support apprenticeship programs within our community and so that we can have young apprentice working on these jobs in our community, have a certain percentage of our children that are living in our community working these jobs so that they can make a part of our workforce traits in our community. We need them, I think.
I think that we do a good job of promoting our parks and our trails. We have a lot of areas, you know, a lot of younger professionals, we're avid bikers, joggers. I think that we do a good job of putting that stuff out. I think that we did improve that a little bit as far as like when... And I think that we did improve that a little bit as far as like when, you know, Berkshire's going on, the College World Series, maybe do some more ads or something, maybe pay for some station ads or something to let people know about that. But as far as like codes and new businesses, there's, I talked to a woman, then she started a business in town and she put up some flags to let people know that her business is open. And she got told that she did not do that. She offered, she had them in the market, but she offered to move them back onto her property and was told that that was still, she didn't do that. She was also having problems with homeless people, that she thought were homeless people doing drops inside flowerpots on her property, and people would come and that she thought they're messing around with drugs. So, that's something, crime homelessness, that we also need to deal with to help those small businesses.
Cole?
Yeah, I think Dustin gave a great example, you know, the kind of little regulations that kind of put a headache on business owner. I also talked to a local business owner who, you know, he had issues with homeless people in the back side of his business or stealing property out of this property, stealing from his property. So, we ought to get that, you know, enforced. We got to be sure that we're taking care of those. That's a big thing. On the social media side, I do think that we do a good job of promoting, of course, and really Dustin said, I would like to see us put warranties on using our city resources on social media to better promote our local businesses and help people and help advertise for these businesses to showcase, hey, here's the local options that you have for entertainment or you think you're doing something. Here's something you might not know about. I think using those social media platforms that the city owns to try to help advertise and promote these local businesses, I think that's something we can do.
Thanks, guys. We have time for one or two questions and I promise to throw it out to the audience. If any of you have a question, we have one, hold on, two minutes for these answers. Dustin, so, go ahead. You want to stand up?
Yeah, I'm the County Supervisor. You know, there's a community in Iowa that are a lot like Council Plus, but are growing. I'll give you one example, Ankeny, Iowa. Ankeny, Iowa's population in 1990 was 20,000. Today, it's 80,000. What are they doing right that we're not doing? And the other thing is, would you, would you, a candidate, be willing to take a look at communities in our growing, see what's, you know, see what's asshole piled in? Can you do a copy process? Because it's, the fact that Council Plus can't grow, just can't understand it. I can't understand it, so that's all.
Dustin?
I think that we should be looking at other communities. I'm not familiar with Ankeny specifically, but I would like to, you know, address that by, you know, going into those communities, talking to their city council, their Chamber of Commerce, see what there is that we can figure out that copies some of that. I think a lot of our issue is, you know, we have a lot of floodplain areas. We have the plus, we have a lot of limitations as far as expansion. You know, we could go east, but, you know, we'd have problems with sewage. We could go south, but there's, you know, problems with floodplain north also. If we would expand out that way, going north into the levee. So, it's, there's a lot of things that we need to look at in order to, you know, solve that issue. There's quite a few areas that we can still develop in the city, but they're kind of landlocked. South Expressway, Metro Drive, you know, Iowa Western is being developed for that Google project, that area out there, but there's other areas in College Road that we can look at. North 16, south of the Walmart, we could look at those areas. I think these are all things that we need to take a look at.
Yeah, I mean, I really agree. I think we need to take a look at these areas that are successful and are growing. We absolutely need to have conversations with that. We need to talk to their city council, their city managers and mayors and businesses and see, I mean, what has caused this exponential growth in your community? What has worked, what hasn't? I mean, you got to get as much information as you can before taking on any large-scale projects. So, I mean, I'm not super familiar with the, your work in Ankeny, but I'm hopeful of talking to those people in any other successive city and seeing what worked and what hasn't, and seeing what we can replicate over here for our citizens.
I agree. First of all, you got to have an open mind, and I think we need to look at the other communities that are having success. One of the problems we have in our community, and I'll use an example, we're a minority border community. In other words, we have other border communities that are dominant cities through city, through Abbott, Council Plus is a minority city through Omaha. Taxation in Omaha is quite that different than it is in Council Plus and in Iowa. Their state laws are different. What I would like to see is working, go to work with the state of Iowa and see if we can get an enterprise zone or some type of funding that we can equal out that gap of financing that we have in order to bring businesses into our community. Right now, our only tool is tip. And Omaha's down here and we're up there, and then we're filling in this gap of tax, taxation to bring it, to bring these people over here because they can do it much cheaper in Omaha. We need that ability to have this enterprise zone, maybe set three blocks wide each side of Broadway and bring it all the way through town so that the tax means incentive for businesses and make it more affordable for them to land in our community. I am willing to go and look at other communities. I think that have open mind and can't be set in our, in our, our mindset and position of health. We need to look at all the studies and see what's going to work for our community.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have time for one more question before we have a closing statement for each of the candidates. What did we not cover here this morning that is on your mind that you'd like to ask? Go ahead, if you would mind standing up. Yeah?
As you were saying, the homelessness, so it's not only in New York. But what I was concerned about is in one of the city council meetings, we were informed that there is no supervision at those sites, at those homeless shelters. So, I propose to resolve that issue. Apparently, there's white people going on. Well, I would assume that there's no supervision.
Cole, do it.
Yeah, absolutely. We have to have more oversight and more security at the homeless shelters. I know that was brought up, I think, for additional security. We have to make sure that they have that oversight. Talking to people at the jail, you know, sometimes when we, when we have the person's homeless and we're policing them, you know, talking to them and I'm asking, you know, what plan, where are you going to go? And it's like, I have no idea. And they, they have no idea where they're going to go off to, you know, lobby. They're going to, you know, the homeless shelter over here. And they're like, I can't go there. Trying to take this addiction and I can't, there's, that stuff's, there's too much of it in there. I can't be around that stuff. Trying to get clean and, you know, that's really heartbreaking that they're trying to get better. So, they, but because they're trying to get better, they can't be around that stuff. So, they're not able to go to the homeless shelter because they know it's easily accessible in there. And we have to correct that, you know. Obviously, we don't want people out of the home. We have to make sure that there is regulations and oversight in there and that they have proper security and that we know who is coming in there and who is staying there. And we have to make sure that we're enforcing those rules and that we get that place cleaned up so that if somebody wants to get clean, that they can go there and know that they won't be exposed to that and making it harder for them to take care of it.
There's no third in town here that has this problem, there's no doubt about it. The city is overseeing a grant to get better enforcement of, of that or oversight of the property within, within the building. They've had their troubles, they will always have their troubles. But we're dealing with group people that are down and out and their behavior is very poor and illegal at times. When we're dealing with people that, we got to be careful how we do it because I don't want to criminalize homeless. Homelessness is a, is a situation that when you don't have a place to lay your head for the first time at the end of your life, is a trauma. I would like to see a broader conversation around the whole metro area, maybe go towards a triage center where we can better triage these individuals coming off the street so that we can get them replacements that work better for them. And also, we'll clean up our homeless shelters as far as, we'll know who's going in those places and things like that. If we start direct testing these individuals and making a dry environment, they won't go to it. Part of the problem that people have is they have pets with them and they won't go to the homeless shelter. And trust me, I've been in that homeless shelter many, many, many times in the middle of the night, dealing with individuals that are homeless, and it is an unsafe place at times. But we can do better, and we're working on this, but we have to work out as a whole community because these are human rights that we're talking about. These people are down and out, they may be mentally ill, and they may have intentions. But we can deal with them that way. Thank you.
I've been saying this whole time that I've been running that there needs to be more regulation in there. Basically, we have the upper hand on a lot of that stuff. We control the fire code and we decide whether they're open or not. So, they can, they can cooperate with us or we can get more aggressive on that. But, you know, a requirement in knowing who these people are in our communities, working with the police department to be able to run them, to make sure that they aren't people with warrants, people on sex offender registry. I mean, I haven't looked for a few weeks, but there's 12 known sex offenders staying in one shelter that were charged with crimes locally, and that's probably the only reason that we know that they're there, to be honest. We can work with the police department. I have people sending me information, but right now, it's words. I don't have names, I don't have photos. I need people to work with me on that stuff to, and the police department. I can forward it to them, they can talk to them directly because that's something that we need to deal with. We don't need to have people that are dealing drugs and using people and keeping them from being able to be productive members of society, you know, particularly at a women's shelter where, you know, there's a lot of really bad things that happen when you get women addicted and men too, but, you know, taking advantage of somebody in a situation like that is horrific. So, I will work hand and hand with the police department on that to get information to them to be able to solve these issues. And we need increased regulation, but we also need to deal with camps that are in town as well. Once we start digging that stuff out, we can go in there with the fire department, do, you know, control burns and just start pushing along the river. If they want services, great, they can have them. If they don't, then they go back to wherever they came from. Because unless things have changed in the last couple of years, most of those people are not from Council Plus, have never lived in Council Plus before. They're people from other countries that are living in our, that were living in our shelters. And I think that that's just, we need to deal with that. That's a major issue. Thank you.
It's a football Saturday, so I'm going to call a quick audible and throw one more opportunity out to the audience. If there's a question that's not related to homelessness, workforce development, a housing shortage, I think we've covered that. If there's some specific aspect of that that we haven't, then we take a question. But Cindy, you've got the last question, 60 seconds for these answers, guys. Cindy?
And this is specifically for Cole and Dustin. I want to know why it's so important not to get more information before you say yes or no to any kind of project? Whether it's Dodge Park or something else, I'm here in closed minds. And I just want to know what's wrong with more information?
Steve, you're actually up next. So, it's, it's, again, back, I think, related somewhat to the Dodge Park rivers, or the Dodge Riverside. So, not to put words in your mouth, but, but, but on that question, you both indicated that you'd be against further exploration. Your approach to every issue, is there another issue where maybe more exploration would be something you'd support? Steve, we're just, so that we stay consistent, you were next first, so you want to go ahead?
I'll take that question. I think it's important to have an open mind when you sit down on through the city council. So that you're, because we're representing 60,000 plus people. And if you position yourself, we're not going to, and limit yourself on the ability to learn what's coming forward to you and take every issue seriously and learn as much as you can about it. You're shutting out a group of people that wouldn't have a voice if you weren't educating yourself. One of the projects that I think that needs to be continued is our streetcar that we're looking at. It is not a crawly, let's make that clear. It's been called the crawly, very, quite a bit in the public, but it is not a crawly. It's a modern day means of transportation. We are halfway through the streetcar study, the M-MAC study. The public will be invited in to the rest of this study. And so, please pay attention and watch for this information so you can come in and give us a look. Because I do not have a solid position on it, but I am willing to look and learn of what it could do for our community if we go out there here. Thank you.
Dustin, I'll let you take some flexibility with the question. You can address, Steve brought up the streetcar, but further study on any related issue, what your approach to whether it's the streetcar or any other important topic facing City Council?
As far as Dodge Park project and even the streetcar, I haven't talked to one person that's in support of it. Let's hold it to a vote, let's let the people decide if we're going to look at it or not.
How can we vote without more information?
Let's let it answer, Cindy.
Yeah, the people don't want to lose the park, and that's the biggest issue right now. You know, we've had one engineer that came to city council. You know, we had an engineer say that it'd be a good place to build. I haven't heard one yet. So, let's, let's let the people decide if they want to even look at this project and then we can, we can decide from there.
I'm not against gathering information. What I'm against is reclassifying the property to one that would allow the city government to sell it. If we can do a study without rezoning it to the surplus? Right? I'm never against gathering information on these issues before discussing them or voting on them. But I'm not in favor of rezoning the Dodge Park to where it could be sold.
All right, thanks everybody. We are at the stage of closing statements. So, we're going to give each candidate, we'll start with Dustin, you're next up. Dustin, you have 90 seconds to make a closing pitch to the audience for why should they should vote for you for City Council?
I have a lot of experience, you know, dealing with the homeless issue and crime. We were probably getting two to three homeless people calls a day before I retired. So, I think that I have a lot of experience in this area, and then I think the homeless issue.
I'm going to clean things up for current residents and current businesses
to promote business and to promote people staying here. I mean, I've even talked to quite a few people at the 25th and Nash area that are never putting their houses up on the market. They're sick of dealing with it. There's people all along the west end, including family members of mine, that have been having nightly problems with people coming on with their property, knocking on their doors in the middle of the night, going in their backyard, stealing things when they check their cameras the next day. Our citizens do not feel safe. There are some people that don't think the homeless issue is a big idea, but most of them don't live anywhere near mid or downtown or west end. And I think that if they did, that there would be a massive issue for them. And I think that pulling that up is the best thing and the cheapest thing that we can do to bring in more commerce and to bring in more housing. Thank you.
Cole?
First of all, I just want to thank everybody for taking time to come out here. And I want to thank the Chamber, the Non-Prell again for putting this on. I think informational events like this are really helpful in these local election processes. Like I said, my background, I graduated from Iowa State, got my degree in finance, worked as a financial analyst for years studying small businesses and economics. And now, work in public safety as a correctional officer at the jail, the sheriff's office. I get very good perspective on a lot of the issues with the technical side of budgets and financial statements, but also the firsthand experience of dealing hands-on with these homeless issues, the mental health issues, these drug issues. I think bringing that perspective to the city council is important. I also think that it's important that we get more and more people involved in these local processes, these local governments. I know a lot of people I know a lot of people, particularly around my generation, they only focus on what happens in Des Moines or DC, but what happens at your city council and your school boards and your board supervisors, that has a far more direct impact on 90% of your daily life than what happens in DC. So I think it's great that people are stepping up to get involved in these issues and talking to people at their home, door knocking, they've been thrilled to see more young people getting involved in this. I think my experience will make a good asset to the city council and I hope to earn your vote on number four. Thank you.
Once again, I'd like to thank everyone for taking time out of your busy day. It's a beautiful Saturday morning and hopefully I'll see you on the doorstep coming up shortly. I try to get out in the neighborhood and talk to everyone. I bring a perspective to city council from a lot of different areas, from the construction side, development, I feel strong in those areas. I worked 30 years as a firefighter, my brother was a police officer for 30 years and my other brother was a firefighter for 28 years. We've been in a lot of homes, we've been around a lot of people. I realize that homelessness is a huge conversation in this, in this election cycle and I want you to know, there is probably people from, from outside of our community and through our community or services. We have eight counties that need us on mental health. And so we were ending up with people from out, outside of our community, that's for sure. But I'm going to tell you personally, I had a dog, I have a dog. She lived eight years from the street. She was hot from outside of the street. And she has seen every single solid, every horrible thing that a, that a human sees out on the street. Does this mean that we shutter up our homeless center? No, I think we need to look what's not working and address what we can do to make it better. And I want to thank you and I'll work hard going forward and I'll answer any question that I do have as far as homelessness and what I can do to better our community. And I look forward to working with you. Thank you. Bye.
Great, thank you guys. And thanks to each of you for, for being here. I've seen many of the same faces I've seen at the, at the three previous forums that we've had, so thanks for being committed enough and caring enough about the City of Council Plus. Special thanks to Cole and Steve and Dustin and Jessica who could be here today regardless of where you stand on the position relative to where they stand. Many communities don't have options like we have here with these four candidates and before then with the eight candidates that we had. So just a quick round of applause for each of these guys. And just a quick reminder, the mayoral forum will be here next Saturday at 9:00 AM. So please pass the word. Information is always powerful, helpful, so please pass the word to your friends and neighbors and then of course, November 4th, please get out, make your voice heard and vote. So with that, I'm going to turn things back over to Chris who's going to wrap things up. So thanks again, everybody.
We want to thank Phil again. He donated to this Saturday to be here and help us with this and also, I guess, set the standard for the dress. So thank you, appreciate your help with all of this. As Phil mentioned, next Saturday is the mayoral candidate forum and November 4th is the election. So thank you all for being here. Get out there, vote, urge your friends, family and neighbors to do the same, offer a ride if you can to the polls. I want to thank the candidates for the willingness to serve, for being here. For being here, I want to thank Grand Southwest Iowa for helping to pay for this and for the school district for hosting us. If the candidates are available to stick around for a little while, I'm sure they would welcome some one-on-one questions and conversation. Also, to see that the mayor is here, he's on the ballot for the mayoral race and Jill was here, Jill Schutteck, and I think she left early. I think they would be willing to stick around and have a conversation if you do. So thanks again for, for being here and we'll see you all next Saturday.